And Dr. Taylor for the Speak Up Be Safe Program.
Thank you. Was there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our non-consent agenda for this evening. We'll move now to the administration portion of, first, the public comment. We have three speakers that asked to speak tonight. Again, I think everyone was in here when we went through our guidelines before, but just briefly, again, we ask that you introduce yourself when I call you up, announce the topic that you want to speak about, and then make your comments to the board, trying to keep within three minutes out of fairness and consistency. And the board will take your comments into consideration. Steve Hatley.
Greetings. My name is Steven Hatley, and I'm a concerned taxpayer here in Aridale County. So basically, I'm here to speak about the MacBooks. It is my opinion, after speaking with so many people here in this county, for many of you that do not know, I ran for school board in District Two. I came up short and lost. I met so many people from this community, parents, faith leaders, teachers even, that have very strong concerns about the MacBook. I knocked on at least 750 doors, and almost every single door I knocked on in District Two said they would not consider voting for me if I was in favor of the MacBook program. Why do we even have this in place if so many people are heavily against this? And that's just in District Two. So many people on Election Day on March 15th came out and said, and my opponent would agree with what they said about, so many people did say that if you are in favor of the MacBook program, you will not have our vote. I, at Appalachian State University, study trends, and part of my accounting program, we study trends and technology. MacBooks are not for the future. We are going to a new system here in the 21st century. In my pocket, I have an iPhone right here. This is basically the automobile of the 1920s, to where the MacBooks are basically the old railroads. Everybody said the railroads would be the future, and the car would die within a few years. They were completely wrong. Currently, right now, we are spending so much money, and we are about to spend even more money on this program because the grant is about to end. I think it's a dumb investment, pardon my language, but after speaking with so many people, I strongly urge you to vote against any expansion of this program because it will have negative effects in the future. So many people in this community strongly believe that teachers in the distant future could become outdated because of technological advancements. This is going right towards that direction. People have spoken to me that work for you guys, will work for the school system. And so many people have texted me privately and said how strongly they are opposed to this as well. At church, I have people come up to me when they knew that I was running for school board, and they talked about how frustrated they were that they thought the teachers were not using this appropriately. This is not against the teachers at all. This is not their fault. But parents as well had concerns that the students there were spending too much time on the Internet instead of learning things. I think we should listen to the parents, the teachers, and get rid of this once and for all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker is Heather Griffin.
Good evening. Again, my name's Heather Griffin, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I was going to try to speak at the March meeting. My daughter was being honored here. We had a little family emergency, but I wanted to come back tonight just to speak about the IB program. With my husband and I, and he's been an Aridale County resident a little bit longer than I have, but when we decided to look at Aridale County as the place where we would come and raise our family, one of the things that we did was actually go and visit one of the schools because education's important to us. And before we bought property here, before we paid a dollar of taxes, before we did business here, we looked at the schools. And we had faith that what was here would be part of our overall plan for our family and provide a good life for us. Our oldest was a baby at the time. He wasn't even one. And by the time that he was getting ready to graduate from Brawley Middle School, we heard about a program, attended an assembly on the International Baccalaureate Program. And it sounded good. It was a risk. We were one of those first families that jumped in and said, let's give this a try. And we did it for several reasons. Number one, the academic program that the IB program presented, we felt like was congruent with our goal of making lifelong learners out of our children. And that program has not disappointed us. Yes, there've been some bumps along the way with implementation, that type of thing, but it has really been a godsend for our family for several reasons. Number one, I think the critical thinking skills that the IB program helps develop in students gives them the tools that they need to succeed later on in higher education, if that's where they go, but in life more generally. It teaches students the value of different types of sources and how to discern what they're hearing. It helps them with organized problem solving. Another strength of the program is the way it promotes collaborative work. Those are skills that you need in the workplace. Those are skills that you need in higher education. And that's what we feel like our students are already getting in the middle school. I have an eighth grader. They're getting at a very young age, development of those skills. One of the reasons we jumped in, too, was because we were very impressed and believed in the excellent administrators and then the faculty that were going to be part of the program. And I can't emphasize enough how I would encourage you to continue to support them. And finally, the community service requirement, I think, helps encourage students as they're developing, as people understand civic responsibility as well as the value of community work. So just to let you know where the kids are today, that Brawley School graduate is now at UNC Chapel Hill's Morehead Kane Scholar. Our senior getting ready to graduate from South Aridale High School is going to be attending Duke. He received the academic award for the North Carolina team at the Shrine Bowl this year. And then our daughter, who was here last time, being honored for her science work, just placed first at the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair in Raleigh a couple of weeks ago. I'm obviously proud of them. I hope you can take some pride, and part of that is the IB program and what it's helped them accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Scott Klontz.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Scott Klontz. I am also a parent of an IB student in the Aridale State School System and proud that you guys chose to invest in that program. Ms. Haynes, I'd like to thank you for asking the question tonight about the parental opt-in, opt-out that needs to be in that policy. I hope those i's keep being dotted and t's keep being crossed, which brings to the point the fact that you guys have an ultimate responsibility and are paid by the taxpayer to ask questions. Nine years ago, Rob Jackson probably thought I was the precursor to Chuck Gallion or Martin Page or Cindy Haynes now because I went in his office out on Race Street one day and asked about the construction at Cool Spring. One of the things that Rob showed me was an investment or expenditure for fire suppression system that eventually turned out to be a water line that helped support the community as we progressed with that project. I wasn't being abrasive with Rob. I was just asking a general question. And with that, we didn't invest $500,000 in a system that, like we have down at Woodland Heights now, that's not being used because Mooresville provides a water line. So a lot of times, questions are not necessarily leading or threatening. It's just to find out the information. Three years ago, 2013, I inquired about Mr. Johnson's contract because in 2009, he took over after Dr. Holliday, and the term of his contract should be up. And didn't realize that it had already been signed by Dr. Cash, and I don't fault Dr. Cash for signing it. He was called to Race Street and said, hey, you know, here's the contracts to sign. He signed them, and he went on. But as the questions came along, I checked with the paper because the reporter's usually there when these processes take place in the public. Nothing took place in the public, and he called Ms. Bonham. Ms. Bonham was upset with me because I had contacted the press. Well, I contacted the press because he's in attendance, and nobody else knew. Eventually, we find that the contracts are not valid because they weren't voted on by the board in the public. Mr. Johnson's contract was two years. His staff was four years. That's against general statute. Nobody's pointing any fingers or being accusatory. It's just the fact that, you know, if an awning falls at North Aridale High School and Michael A. Dumeo shows up in Aridale County and wants to find holes in the conduct and the operation of the school system, that might have been one of them. And it might have cost the taxpayer of this county a whole lot more than the time and anguish it took to answer some questions, bring the contracts legitimately up for the board and have them sign and voted on and sign. Funny thing is, the board members that were on the board at that time never were told why Dr. Cash was provided those documents to sign outside of the legal ramifications, the legal statutes of the state. So questions are not bad. Questions are good. We all work together. Got a great school system. I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, these were the speakers who signed up to speak tonight. I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience who would... Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Storm. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a sixth grader in the southern part of the county. After hearing the comments this evening, I actually have a rebuttal for Mr. Hatley with regards to technology. And we all know that technology in the hands of children, the children becoming younger and younger. The kids are getting, you know, devices when they're in first and second grade, regardless of their socioeconomic situation. We can't throw the baby out with the bathwater because we're uncomfortable. The problem is, we have a generation of kids coming into the school system who looks at devices as entertainment. And now the school district everywhere, all across the country, is challenged with having to rewire the way our children think about electronics. I know when I was growing up and I was exposed to laptop, when I thought laptop, I thought work. I didn't think play. But our staff is now challenged with a whole new way of teaching these kids, and it's going to be difficult. And we're definitely in a transition. My generation, your generation, as a parent of a sixth grade girl, let me tell you, it's a 24/7 battle. And I know it doesn't stop at school. But I encourage you to continue to support technology, one-to-one technology in this district because it's not going away. And we can teach them to do the right things and have the right attitudes towards technology. It all starts here. The other thing is, I also wanted to say, I've lived in southern Aridale County for 13 years. And before the recession, it was a very transient area. People were disengaged, not interested in local government or schools. But I'm telling you, that's changing. And I'm, as a representative, a self-appointed representative of the southern half of the county, I want to convey to you that the southern half of the county is completely on board in bringing and uniting the county as one. And we are completely in support of the financial decisions that need to be made to support all the children in this county. I think sometimes there's a perception that maybe those of us in the southern half of the county are a little self-absorbed and have our own agenda. That's not true. With regards to Mrs. Griffin's IB commentary, I know of four children coming from private school that are coming back to ISS because of school choice. And we are obviously threatened by charter schools in the southern half of the county. I know Woodland Heights lost over a quarter million dollars in funding. Doesn't matter how much money our PTO raises. It's a drop in the bucket compared to what we're bleeding out to these corporate charters. So offering school choice within our own district is the right thing to do. We should continue to support that. And again, just want to implore and convey to you that the southern half of the county is on board with all the initiatives that are in the proposed budget. Thank you very much.
James Hogan, again. I can't help but come to the defense of the poor MacBook. With all due respect to Steve Jobs's finest creation, I hope you'll indulge me in satire. While we're getting rid of MacBooks, perhaps we could get rid of air conditioning. I went to school without air conditioning. Channel One Television's up in the corner of the classroom as well because we all know that TV is the boob tube. It rots your brain. Electricity is a modern convenience, but a chalkboard doesn't require electricity. And I'm sure the power bill for our schools is quite big. I'm kidding, of course. When we hand a young person in our school system a MacBook, we might very well be handing that young person the most valuable material asset that they have had in their lives so far. Think about that. Think about the trust that that places in that young person when you hand them a computer that costs a lot of money and you say that this is a tool for your education. These young men and young women, some of whom have had nothing invested in their education by their parents or their grandparents, now have a gateway to a world of knowledge. In Florida, computer programming is on track to be considered a foreign language. It will meet the state requirement for foreign language. When I talk to young students at Davidson about the businesses they're interested in developing, one of the first things they talk about is building a web development team, somebody who can build an app or a computer portal or other kind of digital access. Do we need MacBooks to save Aridale Stateful Schools? No. A great teacher is worth a lot more than a MacBook. A safe classroom, a safe facility is worth a lot of money as well. But technology is just as critical as any utility that we provide for our students for their education. It is just as important. We need both. A good teacher, a safe classroom, and the technology and other resources those teachers need. I'll close by sharing that technology in education is a crazy thing. We are looking at the history of the future of ed tech as we speak. And next week, there will be another flavor of the month, another iPhone and iPad, some device that hasn't even been invented. But we can't buy something that's not on the shelf. We can't tell our students that their future just hasn't been developed, but we promise to invest in it when it has. So I implore you, hang on to those MacBooks. Ask our students to use them well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Travis Elliott. Most of you know me from one part or the other. Brady had the displeasure of having me as ninth grade civics class, and then he had the displeasure of being my principal when I was teaching and being my superintendent. And poor old Chuck, I used to wash his windshield at the gas station down in Troutman. But others know me for other different reasons. I simply come here for two reasons. One, to give you an example, as a teacher, we had observations, some announced, some not announced. And they weren't to get us out of the classroom. They were there. They were done. They're still implemented in order to help us become better teachers. That's the job of the principal and things of that nature, just like your job as a school board is to do the same thing for our school system. So when you go to visit, in my opinion, and you go to talk to people, you're not there to make someone look bad. You're there to help build morale. You're there to help them. You're there to help our system become more united as spoken before. You can agree or disagree with me. That's fine. But I'm going to give you some examples since this started. Since I did teach in this county for some time, I do know quite a few teachers, principals, and assistant principals. And I got on the phone, and I went and saw some of them. And I'll just give you one example because it was a monotony. It's the same story. This past Saturday, I spoke with a lady that teaches at Lakeshore Middle. Mr. Page, I believe, had been in her classroom two or three times. And I asked her how she felt about that. And she said, the nine years I was at East Middle, I never saw one person. I've been at Lakeshore for the last three, and I saw Mr. Page more times than a lot of central office people. She wasn't discrediting central office. Her rebuttal come back to the fact of, he's made me feel valued. He's made me feel like I matter. He hasn't once said a negative thing, asked a negative question. It's always been, how are things going? What can we do to help you? What do you see going on in your area? Never once was a person's name mentioned. Never once was anything negative said. So for people like Cindy and Martin to be publicly ridiculed is wrong. Because I can remember at Stateful Middle, there's a gentleman on this board that came in my class in my school without me knowing about it and asked me questions. And just for the record, Martin wasn't on the school board at that time. So I come here in support of what you're doing. I appreciate all of you. Your job ain't easy. But understand that we're all together, and our job's to govern each other. It's not to be told what to do and say, yes, sir, or yes, ma'am. It's to ask questions. It's to get to the truth of things and move forward for a better school system, the one that I used to work for, the one I still coach for, unless I get fired tonight at North Aridale. I just came from a banquet. We got great kids and great people in this county. Don't forget how we got here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others who'd like to speak? If not, we'll move on to board member comments. I think Mr. Gallion has to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had several, and I think we've already voted on this, and we did our calendar, but additional minutes. And by the way, I told them at the last one, we had five days out for bad weather. And I apologize because we should have went ahead and excused that Friday, March 25th, which is Good Friday also because we had enough hours. And we had a lot of schools that didn't have them. Do you have a complete count, Mr. Johnson? How many teachers and students did not show up on Good Friday, by any chance?
Yeah, we had approximately 135 teachers out on Good Friday.
So we probably should have, and I apologize to them. When I made the motion, we not only forgave February 16th, we should have probably forgiven that extra day because we seem like we have plenty of hours. But I've gotten several emails, and Mr. Page and I talked about this, too, and I think we've already voted. But looking at our hours, we might have been erroneous and putting so many more hours on them. If we go to seven, 10, or 15 minutes, we're looking at 175 to up to 280 for some of the schools, extra hours over the 1,025. And I just wanted you all to look at that again. And I've had a lot of comments and a lot of emails about it. I think maybe we should maybe stay where we are, and maybe the one we didn't have with Presley, maybe we can work around that. And that was the only one that did not have enough hours and minutes. So just want to throw that back out. I've had a lot of comments and questions. People say, will you all look at it one more time or just look at it? So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, I, too, have had several comments from principals and teachers. When we look at it, we have schools that are, right now, anywhere from 25, 27% over the state mandated hours already. With additional 10 minutes, we'll have one school that's going to go over 30% over the mandated hours. When we look at, we really have two schools that are really short. They are alternative schools, and I understand that. But I really wonder if we didn't take a shotgun where we probably should have used a rifle. And I, too, would like to have some more information. I'm afraid we really didn't ask the teachers. We really didn't ask the parents. And we were told all the principals were for it, but I'm not sure that's true. We need to... I would like to have some more information if we could go back and look at that. But that's... We've already voted for it. I'm not sure what we need to do. But I, too, would like to have some input from teachers and parents on it, possibly something like a survey or something like that. And I think we may have just jumped a gun on that.
Well, I'd like to say, as one of the board members, I either made the motion or seconded. I can't remember exactly when I look back. But we were adopting the calendar as recommended by the administration, and it met all the goals we were trying to meet. Once some things soak in and they look at this, it's the same thing. I'm concerned a little bit about teachers having to work 20% more time than they're getting paid for. We already push them. A lot of the time, they're not getting paid for. So I guess from my perspective, I think it would be nice if maybe the next Cal meeting, if we could bring that calendar back and have a short discussion on that to analyze those times and see if that's going to meet the sufficient goals. We were trying to have enough where we weren't taking out the teacher workdays that were mandatory. We're in there and look at the times. And I welcome any comments. I've talked to several teachers who like the calendar, but they also didn't like the time and the things that were there. So somewhere, there probably is some common ground we could go to. But I'd be more glad to... I'm not offended at all by making the motion to adopt the calendar if we need to change it, so.
Any other board comments?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to try to take action on that? Or is that something that the administration would be willing to bring back to the Cal meeting?
I think, Mr. Johnson, I can talk about that when we prepare the agenda. I mean, it seems to be the consensus that we need to look at that in greater detail. I think if you agree, we can just put that on the agenda.
Yes, absolutely. We'll be glad to bring that back. I think once folks do hear a detailed explanation of why we requested to add 10 minutes to the school day, most people will support that wholeheartedly. It's important to remember that your hands are tied by general statute about when you can start the school day and when you... or, excuse me, when you start the school year and when you have to have that school year completed. And if you do look at our calendar for next year, you're going to see a lot of teacher workdays are bunched up in August. And part of that is true because of the extremely late start of the school year next year. I think we start on the 29th next year, and there are seven teacher workdays before school actually starts. We also have to be out of school before June the 10th. And so the calendar that was built accomplishes those state requirements, but it also gives you very little flexibility next year with snow makeup days. Currently, there's only three days in the calendar for snow makeup. And I think there's one in January, one in February, one in March. For the last two years, you have forgiven days. And because of the minutes that are built into our calendar, you do have that flexibility. But by losing those teacher workdays, you're beginning to lose your flexibility. One of the reasons that we proposed adding 10 minutes to the day was to bank time so that you could continue to have that flexibility to forgive days in case you do run out of snow days. And if you maintain that flexibility, it will help you as a board avoid having to use spring break or Saturday school. We don't think that either one of those options would be very palatable with the public nor with our staff. And if there's any evidence that this Good Friday that we just was in school, I think that supports that because we did have a significant number of teachers out, even though that was marked as a snow makeup day a year ahead of time. It's also important to remember that as we look at the calendar, we're not in this boat alone. A lot of school systems have taken the same option that we proposed to you. Mooresville Graded School has added minutes to their day for next school year along with Alexander County, Wilkes County, Rowan County, and Cleveland County. So a lot of our neighbors are adopting the same policy. We did repol our principals, and 35 of our 36 principals do support the 10 minutes in maintaining the flexibility and giving the board the option. The other issue... Uh, the other, uh, issue that we will have to address, uh, should you wish to do away with this option, is, um, our, our current instructional time includes lunch. And when you back out that 25 minutes a day for lunch, then those, those hours of instruction are not as impressive as, as they look on paper. Uh, but we'll certainly add this to the Cal agenda next, uh, month and bring it back to you for reconsideration.
Mr. Ch- uh, Mr. Johnson, does the 10, 1,025 hours from the state include lunch or not, the requirement?
The state gives you the flexibility to include lunch, but your board policy does not.
Also, I, I don't, I really don't think the calendar's got much we can do about it. It's, it's a tough thing, we need to get. And I've told everyone that's complained to me to please contact their legislators, and, uh, I believe you and I, I spoke with a legislator this week, and, uh, uh, you're gonna send him some information about the calendar. Uh, I think we've, that's one of the biggest things we need to ask for support from the community, and the people in the community, is to, to, to do something about this calendar, bring some of the control back to our local LEA. Uh, I, I think the questions we were getting is the fact that most of our schools are already well over the time. And we had, really only have two schools that are an issue, and why we're adding 10 minutes to all the schools, uh, and it's gonna cause a problem for a few of them. Uh, but I, that, I think that's some of the things we need to look at. Uh, logistics-wise, with our, uh, I, I still think there's some way we can logistically, uh, move our times up for our alternative schools without affecting all the schools. But when you've got a school that's gonna be 30% over what, you know, the state's saying, and basically our teachers are getting paid for, uh, teaching 1,025 days, and when we throw on 30% more work to them, uh, and, and let's face it, most of our teachers are there anyway, uh, I, some of them just feel like we're, you know, trying to throw more and more on them, and maybe they, you know, I've told them, "Well, don't take it personally, it's not that." But, uh, I'd, I would like to see some more information on it, and I'd like to see some options on just adding it to the schools that we really need to add it to. And, uh, you know, I'm especially concerned with our elementary schools, because those poor, poor teachers in the elementary, uh, uh, they don't have time to do anything during the day. I, and, and one of them told me they now have to be there 15 minutes earlier, and they were, did have to be there at their school, and now they're gonna have to be there 10 minutes longer. Uh, it starts adding up, and, and especially no more raises than they've had in the, uh, past year. So, uh, I'd like to see us look at this and look at some different options, and what we can do, and, and, uh, try to make it work for everybody.
Yes, we'll be glad to bring it back, and, uh, you hit the nail on the head, uh, when you, um, mentioned that this is an issue that the General Assembly could fix if they had the political courage to do it.
Mr. Cash, I, I think from a procedural standpoint, um, a motion to reconsider, which is what this is, should be made either at the meeting when the action was taken, or at the next succeeding meeting. So even though you don't have a, make a final decision, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to reconsider that action, and to consider it at the May or June, or whenever you want to consider it, just, just to be procedurally accurate. And since I think the vote was unanimous to approve it, then anyone could make the motion, and the board could simply vote to reconsider it and take it up at the May, at the May meeting.
Why don't we do that?
Does it have to be the same date? Just make a motion the same date, like we did it on March 14th? We vote on it as a matter? Just make a motion reconsider-
Be voting to reconsider the action taken, uh, on that, on, at the, and you can just, what I'm saying is you don't have to have the conversation now because people aren't prepared to make the discussion, but you need to make the motion and approve the motion tonight to consider it at a later date.
Can I make the motion and reconsider what we did on March 14th with these schools' start time and end time?
Second.
All right. And just for clarification, say that we would meet, uh, and discuss that at our next Cal meeting?
Correct.
I mean, we didn't specifically say it in the motion, I don't believe, but, so that way it states exactly when we'll discuss it again, if that's okay with you.
That's perfect, fine.
All right. Uh, so a motion, a second, uh, any other discussion on the motion? During all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Have the motion carry six to one. All right, uh, any other board member comments tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, uh, may I ask the superintendent a couple of questions?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, have you had any complaints of me wandering, went randomly through our schools, causing disruptive intrusions into the educational process?
Could you ask that question again, please?
Said, "Have you had any complaints from your principals of me wandering randomly through our schools, causing disruption to the educational process?"
No, sir.
"Have you had any complaints from our principals of me going through the schools without appropriately checking into the front office and notifying the school I was there?"
I've had principals say that they saw you or heard that you were on campus, and they were not aware of that.
Okay, can you tell? Okay, I'd like to know where that was, uh, sir.
If you'll give me an opportunity to go back and check, I can try to get that information for you. I can't recall off the top of my head.
Well, it must've changed since Friday, because Friday you answered that differently.
No, sir. Uh, I don't mean to be argumentative, uh, with you, but I have had principals tell me that they were told by staff members that you were there, and they were not aware that you were on campus.
Okay, I'd like to know about that.
Um, I'll, I'll do my best to try to get that for you, but I, I don't make notes about, um, comments that people give me, um, concerning things like that. I, I do know that you have a different management style, and I've said that publicly before. And I think most people are okay with that, but there are some folks that have, uh, voiced concern that, um, they have issues with some of those visits not being announced, or stating a purpose, or including them in your visits.
Well, I check into the office. Now, it would be possible that the principal was not in the office at the time, that, that could be possible. Uh, normally, I am, uh, invited to these schools by these teachers and go to these programs, uh, but even that, I still go through the front office. But, uh, uh, I'm not gonna say that the principal may not have been notified by the front office, because normally they ask me where I'm going, I tell them what I'm there for, where I'm going, and they normally say, "You know how to get there?" And I normally say, "I do," so, uh, but anyway, I would like to question that.
I'm not sure if any other board members have comments to make or, or not. I would like to make a couple of comments, I think. I don't ordinarily do this, because we ordinarily, for the first 14 years, didn't have the board member comment portion as an organized part of our, our meeting. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm okay with change, I'm okay with differences of opinion, and I'm okay with, uh, different types of boardsmanship. Uh, the one comment I think that Mr. Page is alluding to, it relates back to the comments I made a couple of meetings ago about board member questions, and I think that may have been misconstrued somewhat. Uh, uh, I didn't mean to convey that a board member should not ask questions, I think that's part of our role. Uh, what I did try to convey was the manner in which those questions come about, and the forum in which they are asked. Um, and this relates back to my understanding, maybe things have changed over the years, and, um, as you know, I will not be, uh, on the board after the next election, and, and things may be, uh, changing, uh, as times do change. Uh, but I'm, I base my comments back on my understanding and how the board had operated, uh, from the, uh, Board Membership 101 class that I went to in Raleigh. And there were two major points out of those, uh, a few days of, uh, of class there in Raleigh for all new board members. One, the message that was conveyed to us, uh, ad nauseam, so to speak, was that an individual board member was elected to the board by some part of the public, however the board was set up in that particular school district, to represent the people of that district. As an individual board member, that member had no power, authority, direction, or any, uh, bus- justified reason, according to, to the message we heard, to go, uh, asking for information of people in their individual offices, uh, uh, and that, and that the only direct action of a board member should be as a participant with his board. So the bottom line being that an individual member was no different than another public member, who has a privilege, uh, and possibly obligation as a, a bona fide citizen, to try to find out information about, uh, anything that's public in the school district. That part I had no problem with, and still don't have a problem with. It's the manner of going in that I've had complaints or concerns brought to me over time by some members of the, uh, school system as employees, about, uh, individual members coming in and asking for reports, asking for data collection, summaries, things that were time-consuming and took time away from their general duties of that day. And, um, and then the question was, is this a recommendation or request from the board as a whole, or is this a request from a board member? Now, we were told in the Board Member 101 class I took, that one way, and probably the best way, to avoid that particular, um, potential, you know, conflict of, of understanding, was that the board should go through the superintendent with their collective questions. That the board's questions should come up in the meetings, uh, in a formal way, be discussed by the board, the board as a whole decide what was important, go to their employee, which was the superintendent, uh, to have him gather that information for them, and whatever kind of report that the board so, uh, requested. If the superintendent needed to get information from other employees, then that was his prerogative to pick and choose who could best give him that information and gather and bring it back. I know that's not a perfect system, but it's a system that allows the board to act as a unit, and that's the part they were trying to convey to us. The second, um, major point they made in that, uh, class was that even though the employees of the school district were under the direction of board policy, they were not under direction of board members, either collectively or, uh, individually. But they were, um, governed and, and operated, uh, through the superintendent's office as the executive officer employed by the board. So the, the, uh, understanding was that the board negotiates, interviews, hires their employee as the superintendent, and then that, that superintendent is their employee that operates under their direction, uh, directly. And so out of respect for the superintendent, the board should direct their questions through the superintendent. The, uh, um, part of that, uh, I think, just trying to be as simple as I can, but still cover the information, there are two reasons, uh, as I understand, why the board should go through the superintendent. One is out of respect for the superintendent that they employ, two, out of respect for each other, because when there is, um, questions from these employees about who is the one asking the question, is it the board collectively, or is a board member? Um, and that's kind of where my comments were made and directed to the other night. Excuse me, some of these employees, you know, question that, and if it's not something that I particularly feel a need to know, or the manner in which the question is asked is not the manner in which I personally would ask it, I, I don't think it's fair to me or other board members, as I'm trying to represent all of us, uh, that, that particular conflict is out there. Uh, uh, the other thing, and maybe more importantly, uh, is the fact that we can get into legal problems down the road, specifically if employees of the district have a question, um, uh, about contracting, or about some individual element of their employment, if a board member has already had a discussion regarding that, and that employee asks for a hearing, if the board member has already had, had conversation, that basically, uh, eliminates that particular board member from being able to participate in, uh, in the hearing, uh, which basically eliminates his responsibility to act as a board, uh, or as a board member in that category. Also, conversations that happen along those lines could potentially put the whole board in jeopardy, uh, or the system, uh, in jeopardy, if, uh, comments have been made that allude to, uh, a member's or an employee's contract not being renewed or not, you know, when it has not come through an official board action. Uh, so I think we have to respect our positions that we were elected to, and be responsible to the public by being observant, being astute, and being participants in the community, but at the same time, protecting the, uh, the stability and integrity of the board by not going overboard as an individual member. And that overboard is a broad definition, and I'm not trying to go there tonight. But those are some of my concerns, spoken, uh, as briefly as I can, that I think reflect comments I've heard from other board members, and specifically comments I've heard from other employees. And other business leaders, uh, in the community have come and said, "What board have you been on before where a board member goes out into an industrial setting, or into another business setting, and goes into the offices and areas of, uh, employment by that staff?" I've been on several other boards over time, and I, and I've never seen that happen, that board members' comments, actions, and discussion takes place in a board meeting with the CEO of that corporation. Uh, so that's, that's just the history behind it. That's the, um, the perspective I was coming from when I made those comments, and it was not a directive, or not intended to be a directive, on me as one individual board member trying to direct another board member on how he should act. It was just trying to remind us to try to protect the integrity of the board, and, and be cognizant of the question of when we go out into the schools, or however we feel we, uh, operate as a board member, to always think of the question, is what I'm asking something that I'm trying to find out as an individual board member, or am I truly representing the board as a whole? And, and that's really the simple answer to that.
May I have a one-minute rebuttal? Uh, first off, if you were at the, uh, law conference, I think, Mr. Gagian, you were there, and so, and you were there, uh, is that what we were basically told? That we, we couldn't ask questions? First off, let me read you legally what the job of the school board is. Said Board of Edu- and this is general statutes 15C dash 36. Said Board of Educations shall have general control and supervision of all matters pertaining to the school pup- the public schools and their respective administrative units, and they shall enforce the law in their respective units. So, the law says the school board has control over everything, not just the superintendent. But it, the recent North Carolina School Board Association Law Conference, which was very eye-opening to us from the standpoint, we were even told to aggressively ask questions. Is that not what we were told by their lawyers? Aggressively ask questions. Uh, this is a statement, I'm gonna quote a statement from the North Carolina School Board Association, uh, quote, "They recognize that board members, board members, have multifaceted role as administrators, investigators, and adjudicators." There is- There is no per se violation when the board acts as both an investigator and adjudicator on the same matter." So they give, that's their statement, Mr. Chairman, board members have that right.
All right, we may disagree on that as we go along, but we'll try to still work in unity as best we can, will be my pledge. Any other board member comments?
May I make another comment, Dr. Cash? I realize that in the last couple of years, the dynamics of our board has changed, and that's not a bad thing. You know, new people bring new ideas and different philosophies and different management styles. As a superintendent, I want all of you to know that I am committed to doing all that I can to bring harmony to this group. I too have attended some of those meetings that you have been to, the law conferences and whatnot, and the one that resonates with me comes from Allison Schaefer, who is the chief legal counsel for the School Boards Association. I've heard her say this a number of times, that be careful, because when your school board meeting becomes the best show in town, you can bet good things aren't happening for children. And I don't want us to become so involved in the minutia of working together as adults that we forget about the children. Now, the new management styles that some board members have brought to this board are a little different, but that's not a bad thing. Mr. Page, I did tell you one time about a principal who was in tears with me after a visit, and I think I called that to your attention. And my advice to you was, it's perfectly okay to ask questions, but please don't be so aggressive in how you ask the questions. And so the only thing that I would say to you is, let's work in a spirit of harmony and trust, because I do think we have lost that the last couple of years, and just give everybody a gentle reminder that the 21,000 children that are gonna walk through our door tomorrow morning are counting on the adults to get this right. And if we don't get it right, they will be the folks that pay the penalty, because the grownups are not getting along. And I am more than willing to work with the principals and the central office staff to readdress our spirit of collaboration and partnership and make sure that we do have a system that meets your needs and that we are being honest and transparent and open with all board members. That's my commitment to you.
Do you have other superintendent comments?
Well, if you've got time. Very quickly, and I know it's getting late, but I do wanna call your attention to some information that you got last week from the School Boards Association, and I put this in my Friday update as well, and the clock is ticking on this, so time is of the essence. The General Assembly is back in town, and a new piece of legislation has been introduced that we all need to be aware of and we all need to express an opinion about before Wednesday of this week. It is General Statute 115C/75.7A. And the legislation has to do with achievement school districts. Now, you guys know that there are 115 school systems in North Carolina, but if this legislation is approved and makes it through the General Assembly, it's in committee right now, there will be a 116th district created, and this will be called an achievement school district. It will have its own superintendent, and that superintendent will turn around and hire staff. And the idea behind this legislation is that this new district will take over the low-performing schools in North Carolina. Now, in my view, as I read the material on this, I got this vision of the camel edging his nose under the corner of the tent, and I'm sorely afraid that if he gets his head under the tent, he's gonna walk on in on us. The background on this piece of legislation goes back to 2012 in the state of Tennessee. In that year, the Tennessee General Assembly took a few of their state's low-performing schools and put them in an achievement school district, which is exactly the model that North Carolina's looking at. These achievement school districts, ASD, can then either turn them, turn those schools over to a charter management company, or they can put new management into the district to run those schools and operate them like a charter. Three years into the program, the Department of Education at Vanderbilt University studied the results that this achievement district was getting in Tennessee, and it was the conclusion of the researchers that there was no significant progress made by any of the schools that were put into the achievement school district. The North Carolina School Boards Association has expressed concerns about this legislation, and here are a couple of the issues that they raised. The premise behind this legislation is based on the A through F grading system that North Carolina implemented a few years ago. The School Board Association calls this a flawed system of grading schools, and the reason that it is flawed is that the A through F currently in North Carolina is set up to grade schools on 20% growth and 80% composite score. Now, do we have schools in our district that could conceivably go into this achievement school district someday? Yes, we do. I don't think that will be immediate, but what you board members need to realize about this is if this legislation is successful, it will create a new bureaucracy there in Raleigh, it will hire a new superintendent, I think that superintendent's gonna have about a million dollars the first year to pay his or her salary, along with a small staff. And then decisions regarding these low-performing schools will no longer be made locally by an elected Board of Education like yourself, those decisions will be made by bureaucracy down in Raleigh. And so I would encourage all of you to correspond with Representative Rena Turner, who is the chairman of this education committee, and encourage her to have, she and her committee members, to have a wait-and-see attitude about this. I think we're rushing into this just a little bit, and the research does not support what they're proposing to do. And I hope that eventually the General Assembly is gonna revisit this entire A through F grading system. In my view, it ought to be reversed. I think if we would start grading teachers in our schools more on how much they have grown children from the time they met them in August till they finish in June, we would have a much more accurate picture of what's going on in our classrooms. But this legislation is due to come out of committee Wednesday morning, so time is of the essence, and I hope you'll take time to communicate with Representative Turner. Thanks, Dr. Cash.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our agenda for this evening in the public portion of the meeting. Just to mention some other upcoming dates of important events, we have the early release Professional Development Day on April 20th. April 27th will be a called Board of Education meeting with the Advanced Ed Group here for the final exit report at 2:00 PM at the ADR Education Center. May 2nd will be our next committee of the whole meeting at the ADR Education Center at 6:00 PM, and May 9th will be our Board of Education meeting back here at the Aridale County Government Center at 6:00 PM. At this point, if there are no other announcements, I entertain a motion that we go back into closed session to continue discussion on personnel items.
According to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, I make a motion that the board enter into closed session to discuss personnel issues and to preserve the current client privilege.
Yeah, the motions are second.
Second.
All in favor, please, Phil.
I...
All right, we'll go into closed session again. Thank you for your attendance tonight.
For that bill, please.